I'll call to order the December 9, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support this evening. Shannon Bays, Clerk of the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've, excuse me, if you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close five minutes past six. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and the members of the public that Robert's rules of order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, we have COVID-19 update. Philip Mason-Joyner, the county's Public Health Director, will present. He is joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Good evening, Gary. Happy to be with you this evening to provide the weekly COVID-19 briefing. Thank you, Shannon, for the slides. If you could go to the next one, I'll share our weekly case and death data from the past week. In Clackamas County, we have had 534 new cases and 11 deaths. In Walton County, 887 cases and 14 deaths. And in Washington County, 721 cases and 11 deaths. The next slide shows our weekly case count, week by week, since the beginning of the pandemic back in March of 2020. And we are, as I've said in previous weeks, on a jagged decline down. But this week, we did see a slight uptick. We will see next week if it can continue to head downward and keep that trend line continuing. Testing continues to be a need in the community, certainly with it being the holiday season, a lot of folks wanting to gather safely, a lot of folks with it being upper respiratory illness season in general wanting to know about COVID concerns. And I want to point the community to a great resource, our testing site that's open at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds. The fairgrounds have been exceptional partners in responding to COVID-19 and helping us meet community needs by making their venue available. There are appointments available Thursday through Monday at the fairgrounds. Want to encourage folks to cop onto the web, cur.tv/cambi, in order to get access to appointments. We're also working with our partners, the Clackamas Community College, to stand up another testing site in the North Clackamas area at their Harmony Campus there at the school. That's another location that will open in early January. So continuing to do what we can to provide low-barrier, easy-access tests that are at no cost to the individual. The Omicron variant continues to be monitored very closely by the news and looked at. We don't yet have all the answers on potential impacts of this new variant. It has been detected now in our neighboring states of California and Washington. This map here on the right, the dark green, the dark green are the states that it has currently been detected. So we believe at this point it's only a matter of time before it's found in Oregon. Related to this variant, there have been some initial lab studies that Pfizer has done with their vaccine. And at this point, it's looking like the most effective strategy we have available right now to address potential impacts of this variant is to encourage vaccinations. And the booster shot, the booster today was just authorized for 16- and 17-year-olds. So that's something new this week that just happened. Clackamas County, we continue to make progress as a community in terms of providing vaccines. We are for adults aged 18 and older. Close to 73% of folks have completed their initial vaccine series in Clackamas County, and 25%, a quarter of adults in our county have received their booster shot at this point. Over 293,000 people have been vaccinated in Clackamas County and just really want to continue to thank our public health staff, our fire partners, our healthcare workers, volunteers that continue to make the vaccine accessible and available throughout communities in our county. And scheduling continues to be a challenge. I'm hearing every day from folks seeking an appointment. And I do acknowledge that it is, it is hard. There's a lot of demand right now. The best resource that I can provide you is, is the easiest to get, to go to getvaccinated.org.gov. Pre-register. You will then receive a notification and when an appointment at a community clinic or pharmacy is available to you, regardless of its initial doses or booster shot. You will get alerted. It's going to save you a lot of time trying to hunt for appointments on your own online. And if you don't have access to the internet, we have a call center. The number is 503-655-8224. Our staff will gladly assist you in getting an appointment. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That is the information I have for this week. Fairly brief, but appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners.
I have a question. For Philip. Is he gone?
Sorry.
Do you not see a light?
No, I did not see a light. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fisher.
Is Philip still there?
Yes, he is.
I'm still here, Commissioner.
Yeah, Philip, we asked this, I think, a couple of weeks ago. I'm just going to ask it again. Is there any news from the Oregon Health Authority about when there might be some lifting of the mask restrictions?
In the past couple of weeks, the outdoor mask requirement was removed. The indoor requirement is still in effect. I anticipate with it being, as I said earlier, upper respiratory season, a lot of folks indoor. Because it's cold outside, I anticipate that we're going to still have the mask requirement in place, at least until probably February, March, would be my best guess at this point, that you're still going to see that in place. And with a lot of unknowns with this new variant, I see the state continuing to remain cautious.
And any news on tests to stay for our schools? Is that working out in our school districts?
Yeah, lots of changes in the past few weeks around quarantine in schools. Our schools have, the majority have moved from the 10-day quarantine to now the seven-day quarantine, so shorter, with a negative COVID test. So districts have either fully implemented that already or are in process just making sure that they have enough staff and the administrative systems in place to do that. And then tests to stay is, I would say for the most part, everyone's moving into that direction. Again, they're all at different places. It changes daily. I should, you know, maybe next week, certainly in the next couple of weeks, be able to provide a nice snapshot of where each of our schools are at in terms of standing that out, standing that up. But they did just receive last week from the Oregon Department of Education and the Oregon Health Authority, the ability to move forward with tests to stay in Oregon, which is a wonderful thing.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Scholl, you have a question?
Yes, Philip. Do you have an effective test for the Omicron variant? And what is the expected effectiveness of existing vaccines on this new variant?
So the current tests, the PCR tests that are done, the state public health laboratory is able to take samples and sequence those samples, those samples from the tests, and they're able to identify the Omicron variant. So they are able to do that, just like they were able to do for the Delta variant and some of the other variants that weren't as much of a concern. And then, I'm sorry, Commissioner Scholl, your other question?
What is the expected effectiveness of the existing vaccines on the Omicron variant?
That is what we are still waiting on from the federal government and the vaccine manufacturers. Pfizer has done, shared a little bit, and it's in the news, a little bit of some initial, initial lab studies that they've done to show that the vaccines plus the booster seems to have a pretty good effectiveness in terms of exact percentages. I still, the next couple of weeks, we should, we should, as a nation, have more information on that. It's not yet, not yet available.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Philip on this topic? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, we will now move on. The Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board.
Shannon, would you please invite Housing Commissioner Ann Leenstra to join us on Zoom?
She has joined us in the room.
Great, welcome, Commissioner Leenstra. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Shannon, would you please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Approval of Board Order Number 1960 to write-off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2022. Total loss is $2,329.70. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Two, Extending the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Social Services for six months and adding $55,000 for case management for program participants. New total contract value is $280,000, funded with county general funds, budgeted within affordable housing and services. Approval to execute a construction contract with A1 Quality Construction for on-demand services for removing and replacing flooring in public housing units. Total maximum contract value is $250,000, funded through Housing and Urban Development Federal Capital Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Shannon. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Ann Leenstra, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Seconded.
The Housing Authority Consent Agenda has been moved by Commissioner Leenstra and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Ann, for coming.
You're welcome.
I will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's up next?
Next is a board discussion item, which is Approval of Addendum Number Two to Board Order 2020-71, Extending the Emergency Declaration of Wildfire Debris Until August 1, 2022. Daniel Nybauer, interim Director of Disaster Management, will give a quick update to the board. Welcome, Daniel, and go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. We have Amendment Number Two to Board Order 2020-71 to extend the declaration for the wildfire debris. And this is because we are still doing, ODOT is still doing cleanup on the right-of-way. They actually started mowing the trees over the past few days. So they will be able to start cutting them down shortly. And this will allow us flexibility to work with them as they continue that operation.
Wonderful. Any questions, concerns for Daniel? I'll entertain a motion. Move approval?
I move for approval of Addendum Number Two to the Board Order Number 2020-71, Extending the Emergency Declaration of Wildfire Debris Until August 1, 2022.
Second. A motion has been moved by Commissioner Scholl and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Daniel, for coming in. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. And as we near the end of the calendar year, the list grows longer and longer, so there is quite a list tonight. I'll ask Shannon to please read the consent agenda.
So sorry. Sorry, Commissioner, I was on the wrong meeting.
Read last week's consent agenda.
That'd be kind of fun, wouldn't it?
I know. We'll see if anybody catches it.
Have we ever done that before?
Yes, we have, actually. A long time ago. We caught it midway.
It's like, what?
Elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, health, housing, and human services. Approval of Amendment 02 to a revenue contract with Trillium Community Health Plan, Inc., for certain behavioral health services. Amendment adds $192,000 for a new maximum value of $942,000, funded through Oregon Health Plan Funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a contract with Cambridge Consultants for EMS system planning services. Maximum contract value is $152,200, funded through EMS system enhancement funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Sandy Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum value is $150,000, funded through ARPA and FEMA funding. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Malala Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum value is $150,000, funded through ARPA and FEMA funding. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Hoodland Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum value is $150,000, funded through ARPA and FEMA funding. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum value is $150,000, funded through ARPA and FEMA funding. No county general funds are involved. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Cambie Fire District for COVID Vaccine Administration. Contract maximum value is $150,000, funded through ARPA and FEMA funding. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number One to the ground lease between Clackamas County Development Agency and Clackamas County for the property located at 16575 Southeast 115th Avenue for the continued site use for the Veterans Village Program. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Two, Extending the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Social Services for six months and adding $55,000 for case management for program participants. New total contract value is $280,000, funded with county general funds, budgeted within affordable housing and services. Transportation and Development. Approval of a contract with Hart Krauser, Inc. for the Transportation Earthquake Preparation and Response Plan Project. Maximum contract value is $168,185, funded through county road funds. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a board order vacating a portion of an unnamed, unmaintained local access road created in 1913 through Sunshine Valley Orchard Tracks, northwesterly of Boring, Oregon. There is no financial impact. Finance Department. Approval of a resolution for extension and for H Service District's supplemental budget, less than 10% and transfers for fiscal year 2021-2022. This supplemental budget increases appropriations by $16,500, funded through interest income. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a parking lot space lease agreement between Facilities Management and Edington Properties, LLC, for the lease of nine courthouse staff parking spaces located at 713 Main Street, Oregon City, funded through current allocations, some of which are county general funds. Administration. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion and the City of Lake Oswego. The City of Lake Oswego is contributing $30,000 in support of the contract Clackamas County approved with the Coalition of Communities of Color for the Racial Research Justice Study. This is a reimbursement. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion and Portland General Electric. PGE is contributing $45,000 in support of the contract Clackamas County approved with the Coalition of Communities of Color for the Racial Research Justice Study. This is a reimbursement. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion and Oregon City. Oregon City is contributing $8,000 in support of the contract Clackamas County approved with the Coalition of Communities of Color for the Racial Research Justice Study. This is a reimbursement. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Equity and Inclusion and Clackamas Community College. Clackamas Community College is contributing $15,000 in support of the contract Clackamas County approved with the Coalition of Communities of Color for the Racial Research Justice Study. This is a reimbursement. No county general funds are involved. Business and Community Services. Approval of Amendment Number Four of the Memorandum of Understanding between Clackamas County Business and Community Services and Hoodland Women's Club. This amendment extends the time to transfer properties from Clackamas County to a local park district upon its formation. No fiscal impact beyond ongoing operational and maintenance costs incurred by BCS while the land is under Clackamas County ownership. Approval of a local grant amendment, agreement, Amendment Number Six with Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon for provision of a small grants program in support of the local business community impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. This amendment adds $228,486 in CARES Act funding and $22,614 state lottery dollars. No county general funds are involved. Disaster Management. Approval of Amendment Number One to Intergovernmental Agreement Number 34636 with Oregon Department of Transportation for right-of-way wildfire-damaged hazard tree removal. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Shannon. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any item off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a development agency. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for the development agency. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of Amendment Number One to the ground lease between Clackamas County Development Agency and Clackamas County pertaining to property located at 16575 Southeast 115th Avenue for the continued site use for the Veterans Village Program. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Shannon. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda for the development agency?
Second. Commissioner Savis has moved for the approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Anybody wish to remove anything? Shannon, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I will now adjourn as a development agency and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Wow, we're all ready at public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the objective or consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revise Statute and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at this time during the business meetings due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. We have no in-person, blue cards filled out, nobody out there wanting to testify in person. Do not see anybody. Shannon, do we have anybody online?
I have one person online tonight, Chair.
Bring him in.
Paul Hanrahan, you are in the room. Please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Paul Hanrahan. I'm at 2411 Southeast Alway Avenue in Oak Grove. And I'm just putting in my vote to continue funding for the future library at Concord Elementary. That's basically it.
That's it? Well, thank you for your contribution. We appreciate that very much. I've never had a testimony so brief, Paul. Maybe you can be part of the outreach that we're going to be conducting.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
That is the end of my list.
Well, I'm going to close the public testimony portion of this hearing. Gary, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share a piece of, I always like to share good news that happens with our employees and our departments. First, a couple of months ago, Jennings Lodge Elementary School changed the location where students were picked up in order to improve traffic flow and safety. And while that was a positive change, it meant that the teachers and the students had to walk through mud to get to the school building. The Schools' Parent Teacher Association contacted our county's Department of Transportation and Development, and our Transportation Maintenance Division staff coordinated a road crew to lay gravel along the shoulder of a section of Wilmott Street. The principal of the school, Principal Albers, wrote to us and said, "We are so grateful to Clackamas County who placed several loads of packed gravel along the fence line at Jennings Lodge to cover the mud on the shoulder of the road, making it safer and more convenient for staff and students during school dismissal." So thank you to Principal Albers for sending us a note and to our transportation maintenance staff for their quick work to help out those young students to make sure they could get to school safely and in one piece. Next, Commissioners, I do want to share with you and the public that we have openings on the Clackamas County Budget Committee. The Budget Committee consists, of course, of the five county commissioners and five members of the public. And this is a unique time in that three of the public seats are currently vacant. So we are looking for three public members to join the Clackamas County Budget Committee. This is a very, very important committee. This committee recommends to the Board of Commissioners the county budget, the Clackamas County budget for our general government budget, which is over $1.2 billion. So for members of the public who think they don't like how we spend their money, then they should join the Budget Committee. If they think we spend their money just right, join the Budget Committee. If you have any ideas to how to spend public dollars wisely or even more wisely than we already do, which I think is pretty wise, join the County Budget Committee. The information is on our county website, clackamas.us, and you can find out more information about this. But I just wanted to share that publicly. We look for the public to please come and join this and any of our 50 advisory boards and commissions. That is my update. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for bringing up the Budget Committee. It's very important, and I look forward to applications. Commissioners, you know, let everybody know. Now, Commissioner Communication. First, I believe, is Commissioner Savis.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to just kind of mention that tomorrow morning, we will be at, I will be, maybe some of my colleagues will as well, joining us, but at the Clackamas Service Center's grand opening of a warehouse, they're going to do a ribbon cutting. And I will say that, I bring that up because it's probably one of the facilities that I first visited when I was a commissioner, and I was so impressed with the service they provided and the need and how they really helped folks provide food and services and so forth. And they've expanded quite a bit over the last 11 years. Showers, dental, a number of things, clothing and a number of things. So, the fact that they're expanding their warehouse for food means that that basement is pretty full because that's where they had stocked all their food. And I think it's kind of telling of the times when you have a need for more food, more food and assistance than we did 11 years ago. I think that ought to be very, very telling and significant. We also assist in funding for nutrition and food at the Milwaukee Community Center. And they have the Meals on Wheels program there. And they also have been part of that process in delivering food to families that are struggling. And I think that's also another heartfelt kind of an experience if you go and do that and you go door-to-door with the staff there and provide that and also do a check. You're really doing a check with people to make sure they're doing okay. So, it's more than just, you know, handing off a meal. And in these times, it is something that we all be mindful of as we, you know, we enjoy at our homes, the holidays, and realize that some people are struggling. And I'm, you know, I've been looking forward to next week when we talk about the shelter programs and opportunities. The inclement weather is coming. It's cold out there. And I know that we initiated that process. I didn't think, you know, in, I think, September or October, maybe it was October. And I know our staff have been working on a broad program, but I was hoping we could get that sooner. But next week is good as well. It's still on tap, right? It's still on the schedule, Gary?
I'm sorry, it's not, Commissioner.
It's not? What happened?
Sent an email earlier today about that.
Oh, I didn't get, I've been, had a busy day. So, it's been postponed?
It's been postponed till early February. There was a staff memo, memo the staff sent the board yesterday, or earlier today with an update on where we're at. So, we can talk about it more at issues next week if you'd like.
Yeah, so I, then, well, that stole my thunder. Sorry for that.
You can still talk about it, Paul. I think all the things that you're thinking about it still apply.
Yeah, I'm concerned, and I know that my, some of my colleagues also expressed concerns. You know, are we, are we ready for, you know, inclement weather, sheltering? And do we have steps in place? Do they have the green light to provide that if the temperatures drop? Looks like the temperatures are dropping close. Frankly, I think it's, it's there in the evenings already. We've been in the low 30s, but where are we with that, Gary?
Yes, we are prepared for warming centers. We did brief the board on that previously, and you'll see it in your email today when you have a chance to look at that. Our staff is prepared. We have a budget. We have multiple sites that are ready to go. We have the community folks helping us and our staff as well. So, we are prepared.
Okay, great. I apologize for not being able to look at my email. I've been very busy today and haven't had the opportunity to scan my emails whatsoever. But I just want to just kind of, just be mindful of that and let people know that whatever contributions they can make to either the Clackamas Service Center or their favorite charity, that this is the time of year to do that and be thoughtful of that. And that's what I have for today, Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith. Yeah, Paul, I appreciate you bringing that up because it is really important, and I was very pleased to see the email from Rod Cook today, which listed out all of the contracts we have in place for warming shelters. Because, did anybody watch the news last night? They're expecting some lots and lots of snow on Mount Hood, which is great for skiing, but that can mean that the weather here can get colder and more challenging as well. So, just, I just got an email, not just, I mean, it was earlier today, but at AOC, the conference we were at, I know, I think Commissioner Schrader was in the turnkey session. Commissioner Savas, I think you were too. Commissioner Scholl, I mean, we may all have been there, that they went through and talked about the success of the program across the state. And I was asking, inquiring with our staff, just, is this, is there going to be any more opportunities for this or not? What's, what's the status? And I didn't know at that time, but AOC, just, Lizzie Atwood sent me an email asking, Representative Marsh is interested in looking at another round of turnkey for counties that couldn't take advantage of her for whatever reason. And for us, that timeframe was so short that we were not able to get the community engagement that was needed or that we felt we needed as a board to move forward. And so, I'm expecting Representative Marsh will probably want, or Association of Oregon Counties will want to know if we would be, want to consider looking at those, that as a resource. And so, maybe we could add that to Tuesday just for general conversation for Tuesday issues and then give A, Association of Oregon Counties any.
So, would that be for the February session?
Yeah. I do, oh, I do know that conversations always continue about is there, are there viable properties? Where could it be possible? Is it, and we just didn't, that timeframe was so short. If we could get another crack at the apple, boy, wouldn't that be nice?
Why don't we have Gary bringing up issues if it's not too late for Tuesday? It can be discussed, but I don't think this board can make a decision until we review it with staff to see what, if they think it's a viable program. Hopefully, if, I don't want to do a bunch of work and then not have the money come through in February. I don't know, you know, what, what the funding sources are, Sonia, I have no idea. But in case they are, I'm hoping that we don't have, we have an adequate amount of time to implement the program. I think the time factor last time really hurt us. Clackamas County, we, I know we looked at three properties, and for whatever reasons, those properties were not viable. And there was a whole host of reasons why. And I, basically, we ran out of time on it. We put the money back in the pot, and I believe another county used the money, which was really a net gain overall for the philosophy behind the program that took care of homeless, you know, the homeless people during the pandemic. But, you know, if you, I think a discussion on it is fine. I really do want to hear from staff on that.
Yeah. So, what all I'm going to do is, just to finish my communications, unless somebody...
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to forward this on to Rod Cook. I figured that we would want staff to weigh in, and then maybe we can just add that quickly. It's not, it's just, are we interested? And if we can just say, yeah, but we need more time to do our due diligence. We can't have this short little timeframe. That might be something we will want to do, to discuss on Tuesday.
All right, all right. Talk to Gary Schmidt about it. He'll tell you what he thinks needs to happen as far as talking about this and going forward.
Yeah, and then just for the rest of my Commissioner communications, really looking forward, I'm so happy Commissioner Schrader is, is back, and we have a lot of opportunities. I shared a little bit at issues about the conference, not the conference, it was really a leadership academy for prenatal to three, and the efforts that are happening nationally for looking at childcare because we need families to have safe and affordable options for their children to get our economy moving, moving out of this pandemic. And it's, and what I, what really impressed me is we get very Clackamas County-centric, at least I do. I look at our county, I look at our childcare desert, I look at our needs, I look at what are our challenges for our employers. And we know that that's an issue across Oregon, but what impressed me is the conversations with leaders from around the country is how incredibly important this is, issue is nationally in our country. So, what Commissioner Schrader and I continue to, she's got, she worked on the workforce side, I've got the human services side, and we've got some really good synergy and some good opportunities. I'm really hoping we can use this time to build the capacity and infrastructure to look at what is it that Clackamas County needs so that when we, I expect there will be a federal investment, that we are ready to execute for our families here in Clackamas County. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So, wanted to share that. And I'm also, is everybody getting a little bit excited that the holidays are among us? Is anybody feeling stressed at all? I am not either, and I have made a vow. You know, people say, "Oh, my gosh, how am I going to get it all done?" And it's like, no, 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 no. We've just been through a worldwide, we're going through a worldwide pandemic, we're on the other side of that. We need to embrace this whole holiday season to connect with family, to connect with friends in a way that just values that. That's what it's all about. So, I'm embracing that and I'm happy that while I was in Atlanta, my husband decorated the house. So, I didn't do that, which was a special little gift. So, that's my communications. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Well, of course. Commissioner Fisher, thank you very much. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, good evening, Clackamas County. Commissioner Fisher, you needn't worry. Santa Claus is immune to viruses, so he'll be at your house on time.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Scholl.
You're welcome. On some vaccines, on some issues of interest to the people of the county here, on the Digital Vaccine Record Program, Salem is working on a digital electronic vaccine verification tool that will show COVID-19 vaccination status. Currently, Washington, California, and New York have such a system. The Oregon Health Authority said it will be optional and that people would have to volunteer to opt in. The OHA intends to launch the system in March. People need to see the slides on this program at oregonlegislature.gov. Find out how it works, then let your state rep know your opinion. March is not that far away. On the Specialist Four Larry Dahl Signed Dedication Ceremony. Yesterday, we had a ceremony for the Highway Sign Dedication in memory of Specialist Four Larry Dahl, who was born in Oregon City and won the Medal of Honor in service to his country during the Vietnam War. Look for his sign dedicating his devotion to duty on the northbound lanes of 99 E. You couldn't make a big enough sign to remember the heroic deeds of that young man. And it was good to see so many veterans there yesterday and so many people from different chapters of the VFW. On the Three Creeks Natural Area Flood Plane Enhancement Project, I want to thank the Clackamas Water and Environment Services people for the informative briefing last week on the Three Creeks Natural Area, where Mount Scott, Phillips, and Deer Creeks come together on 89 acres in North Clackamas County in the plan to preserve and protect this flood plain. Learn more at clackamas.us/westthreecreeks. And if you want to get your hands dirty and your feet muddy, contact tsunami crew at threecreaks.org. They'd like to get, to meet you and get you involved. I'll also be at the Clackamas Service Center tomorrow ribbon cutting for the new warehouse and distribution center and warming center. I want to say that the Clackamas Service Center does a great job for the people of this county and so many other nonprofits do as well. I really appreciate everyone who's involved with nonprofits and all the kind things they do to help our people. On the Oregon Leadership Summit, policy leaders and stakeholders gathered at the Oregon Convention Center on December 6th for the Leadership Summit: Building Opportunity. The event focused on policy and investment proposals in manufacturing, workforce education, and other opportunities that will benefit Oregonians and people of Clackamas County. You can see the 2021 Summit page at oregonbusinessplan.org. These ideas will affect your business and your job. Take a look and get involved. A reminder on the tolling issue. The I-5 corridor tolling needs to be brought to everybody's attention, and so far, I meet some people who still don't know about it. Please learn about tolling and the potential effects on Clackamas County. See the ODOT website, see the No Toll Army website, see the Vehicle Transportation Alliance on Facebook, talk to your neighbors about it. Keep the pressure up. On forestry, if you're involved in the forest products industry in Clackamas County, the Oregon Department of Forestry on 7th December had a meeting to provide updates on the forest management plan and implementation plans. ODF would like to hear from you. See the ODF website for a link to view and download the plans and the strategy documents. Remember, our forest products, if they're wisely harvested and utilized, Clackamas County and the state of Oregon will profit and prosper. On cap and trade, I know this has come up again, it's being kicked around in Salem, and I'd like people to check out what they can find out on what's happening in Salem on the discussion on cap and trade. If Oregon is to be competitive in the world marketplace, we need to be able to attract new businesses and keep our existing businesses, and they need to be able to thrive and be competitive and profitable right here in Clackamas County. Any new tax hurts their competitiveness and hurts the people of this county. So, look into that, take action, talk to your state representative, and make your voice heard, please. Last week, we got cut off a little early, and I wasn't able to share with you something from, out of history, from 1955. And that has to do with Rosa Parks, who asserted her natural God-given rights and her constitutional rights as well after a bus driver ordered her to give up her bus seat to another passenger, and she refused. And she was arrested on 1 December 1955 in Montgomery, Alabama. Rosa Parks is an American hero, and she will always be a shining example of the importance of moral courage. We are reminded by this of the importance of citizens not to tolerate state overreach, be it by mandate or unconstitutional state laws that restrict the civil rights of the people or that in any way violate constitutional or natural rights. We all need to have the spirit of Rosa Parks and stand up for our rights. And I thank you very much. And if I don't see you all between now and Christmas time, I hope that Santa Claus is, is good to you and gets to your house, just like he's going to get to Commissioner Fisher's house. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you. What I've been thinking a lot about lately, I want to remind folks that December 7th was, I believe, the 80th, correct me if I'm wrong, 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. I had an opportunity to reflect on that because I was actually visiting Hawaii at the time, and it was a very solemn day for me because the time I had an opportunity to visit the site in Oahu and the, and the beautiful monument that was there, I remember I saw a photograph of a group of young men who were a member of their Navy Band. And I know just all taking a photo, it was right there. Every single one of them died the following day after that picture as we were attacked. So, it made me think of our World War II veterans, some of, who are still survivors of that day of infamy, infamy. And I once was door knocking, and I had an opportunity to meet an elderly gentleman who told me, "Oh, yeah, he was there." And, you know, just a great elderly fellow. And he, and I said to him, "Well, what was it like?" And he said, "Well, I was on the ship one minute, and the next minute, I was in the water, surrounded by fire, and I just swam as fast as I could." So, let's not forget that that was a day that really changed our nation forever. And it was a time when, instead of being divided from one another, we really were one country with one, with similar goals and similar ways of believing in who we are as Americans. And I guess if I was to have a Christmas wish that would come true from Saint Nicholas or Santa Claus, it would be that somehow that we moved towards that sense of community and support and decency and oneness with one another, knowing that we are all Americans, we all of our country, and we've all made sacrifices for this country one way or another, whether in the military or civilian or whatever. And that, that's what we should be focusing on, I believe, as citizens of this country. If I was to really have a Christmas message after being there and reflecting on it, it would be, be my wish. And the thing for me that was really poignant is the oil from the ships that were actually sunk, there's still, you can still see it coming and floating to the surface. So, it's a constant reminder. So, that's what I would like to say to people for a Christmas wish, is that let's get back to who we really should be and who we really are as Americans and as citizens of this country. are as Americans and as citizens of this country, because in the end, we all want the same thing. We want prosperity for our families. We want health for our families. We want people to be warm and to be fed. We want to help those less fortunate from us, and these are the values that truly we should be focusing on this time of year. Other than that, just a few things. When I was at the Milwaukee Center opening with my colleagues, I thought that was absolutely wonderful. I had a chance to talk to Martine, our equity inclusion person, and we talked about Indigenous peoples and, you know, what our statement is about recognizing those folks who have been here on our soil and the land for millennia and how, again, once we, how we treat one another and how we, we know that there are, that their histories and their narratives are important to us as part of our American story, that they were here before we were. They're still here. We still have sovereign nation tribes and that. We're lucky in this county that we have tribal nations that we still work very, very close with, closely with. That's particularly important. And after that, you know, I kind of had a few things written down, but I think I've said enough tonight. So, nice, nice seeing you all, and I hope I'll see you all before Christmas as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. As Commissioner Schol explained, most of us attended Larry Dahl's signing of a State Highway 99E this week, and I was fortunate enough to be able to speak and receive the memorial parchment copy of the legislation that allowed the signage from ODOT to happen on the highway. It was really propelled by the local grassroots group who raised $600 to have the sign installed. And the reason why that's important, because he's, he's remembered in our circle of honor here on our campus, and that happened in 2016, and Martha and Paul were there with us. We had a huge event. Well, he's a Medal recipient honor, and there's only a few of them in Oregon. Mark, were there six or seven? There was only seven Medal of Honor recipients in the entire state of Oregon in all the wars we've had. And the reason why he got the Medal of Honor is, and he was in a big truck called Brutus, and it's a munitions carrier. You got to help me.
It was, it was armored truck.
A big armored truck.
With machine guns.
Yeah, about as big as this dais.
Car convoy escort.
Yeah, about as long as this dais, and they were under heavy artillery, artillery fire from the enemy. It had stopped. They thought everything was fine. However, a lone grenade, live grenade, fell in the cab of the truck, and he fell on it, losing his life. But what I learned at the ceremony is you don't necessarily, because you give your life for your fellow soldiers, get the award. You got the award because he shouted out ahead of time a warning to his fellow soldiers that there was a live grenade. They were able to get out. He fell on it. He sacrificed his life to save the lives of others. One of the family members from, from Specialist Goss, I believe his name was, went on and had a wonderful life, and throughout his entire working career, he had Larry Gilbert Dahl's name embossed on a plaque on his desk that he always looked at, and he remembered Larry to the day he died. Because of Larry, he was able to go on, leave the Army, marry, have a family, and a very successful life because his, his buddy, you know, saved his life. That happened in the Vietnam War in 1971, and the sacrifices like that, I think, are just wonderful to remember. His picture is right out here. We have a really nice parchment copy that's embossed that will, I told Jeff Jorgensen, he needed to find a place to, to, to put it, and the Commissioners might want to weigh in, because Jeff is also a veteran, and he was at our ceremony. We had Representative Mark Meek, Senator Bill Kennermer, Steve Bates, who helped emcee that, and many, many retired. All the services were represented: Air Force, Marines, Army, and Navy. Correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Yeah, and it was just really wonderful, and it was really emotional, and I was just happy to be just, you know, able to observe. And Sonia has some great pictures, and we all have pictures, but that was just a really nice ceremony. I'm very happy that's able to happen. And that's all I have, Commissioners. Look forward to seeing you again soon. And without any other further comment, this meeting is adjourned.